All right, ladies and gentlemen, if I can have your attention, we'll go ahead and get our meeting called to order. It is a little after 5:30. We'll give everybody just a second to grab a seat. It's good to see everyone this afternoon, glad you are joining us today. It is Monday, October 21st, and this is our regular city council meeting. We have our workshop meetings on the first Monday of each month where we discuss all of the agenda items that we'll be voting on this evening. So there are agendas back here in the back, if anyone would like to grab one and follow along. At this point, I'd like to recognize Dr. Greg Love. Greg, it's so good to have you with us this evening. Greg is with Crosskey Baptist Church, and we're glad to see you out. Are you feeling good? You doing good?
Yeah, I was just walking a little slow.
Just walking a little slow. Well, you look great, you look good. So we're glad for healing, and Greg will let you offer our prayer, and then following that, Councilman Sales is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Let's pray. Lord Jesus, I thank you so much that we live in America. God, that we live in a land where we can still honor you, and we can worship you. We live in a land where we can pray. God, we know that these are grace gifts to us. God, we don't ever want to take these things for granted. God, first of all, we come and we thank you for Jesus and the gift of eternal life that he provides for us. And God, how cool it is that all we have to do is surrender to him, and we can live forever and be forgiven. God, I pray for all the work that's going to go on today. Lord Jesus, it's easy, when we're familiar with stuff, to become comfortable with it. God, I pray that our elected officials would always recognize that they are called to be a servant, that they are called to honor and serve the citizens. And God, I pray that you would guide them. God, you say that even when there is a king, that you direct his heart, just like you would direct a water course. And I pray, God, you would direct the things that happen here. God, I thank you for the folks that we have serving, and I thank you for the good things that are happening in Tifton. God, it's neat to see when industry wants to move here, and we have even new restaurants on top of the old restaurants. And God, there's just a joyful spirit in our town, and Lord, we know that we're not without problems. And God, where there are problems, I pray that you give our leaders wisdom, not just our civic leaders, but our positional leaders, and our religious leaders, and our family leaders. And God, I just pray again that you would just bless this time, and God, in all these things, that you would be glorified. And I pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Let's all stand. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Greg, and thank you, Councilman Sales. All right, gentlemen, we have our agenda before us. If it is satisfactory to everyone, I will take a motion to that effect or if we need to make any changes.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Jessica does such a good job of sending email packets out to us for everything so that we can review prior to the meeting. And in this packet, we also had our minutes from previous meeting, and you've had a chance to review those. So if there is a motion to accept those, I will do that at this point.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Jessica, did anyone sign in for citizen input? This is the point in time where anyone who'd like to address the council may certainly do so. We do ask that you sign in. If you wanted to address the council but didn't know to sign in, you're certainly welcome to do so at this time. Is there anyone that would like to address the council for any concerns, ideas, suggestions, et cetera? Okay, thank you. All right, now we have something fun to do, and it's a presentation. I'd like to invite Ms. Mary Lynn Rooks. Ms. Mary Lynn, if you'll just join me right down here at the front of the podium. And I'll have a little presentation for some special people in here who are listening. I absolutely won't be here. He doesn't want to be here. You don't want to be? Okay. Well, you don't have to. There you go. You're always on the other side, right? Goodness. We have a special proclamation this afternoon, and y'all excuse my voice, I have a little bit of laryngitis. And this is a proclamation that will proclaim November 3rd as Retired Educators' Day. And the proclamation says, "Whereas the governor of the state of Georgia has proclaimed the day of Sunday, November 3rd, 2019, as Retired Educators' Day in Georgia, and whereas there are more than 130,000 retired educators in Georgia, 30,000 plus of whom are members of the Georgia Retired Educators Association, and whereas the retired educators of Georgia donate thousands of hours of volunteer service and make invaluable contributions to the welfare of their respective communities across the state, and Tifton is no different, and whereas it is appropriate that a day be designated for citizens to express their appreciation for the contributions that retired educators have made and continue to make for the betterment of human lives and for society, whereas local churches will recognize those lasting contributions made by retired educators in this community. Now therefore, I Julie Smith, Mayor of the City of Tifton, on behalf of the Tifton City Council, do hereby proclaim the day of November 3rd, 2019, as Retired Educators' Day, and I call upon all citizens of the City of Tifton to observe that day in the appropriate manner honoring all retired educators." So thank you so much for what you do. We appreciate everything, and we're so happy to have you here with us this evening. So I will present you with this proclamation. So congratulations. Thank you. Did you want to mention anything about the organization or any activities? No, you're good, okay. Thank you all so much. Yeah. And while we're down here on the floor, we have two volunteers who have donated or have agreed to share in their talents and their time towards contributing to the city. Now volunteering to serve on tour of awards. So I'd like to invite Jay Kimbrough. Jay, if you'll come up and join me here. You've already signed your paperwork, but I'm going to swear you in. How are you doing? Thank you so much. So good to see you. All right, this is pretty simple. All you're going to do is listen to this, and then if you agree, you can say, "I agree," or "I affirm," okay? All right, our oath of office says that I Jay Kimbrough do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties as a member of the King's Department of the City and that I will support and defend the Charter of the City of Tifton as well as the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. I shall attend all meetings of the body to which I have been appointed unless providentially hindered. I shall abide by the standards or conflicts of interest adopted by the City Council and the rules of disclosure applicable thereto. Unless it's qualified by the standards or conflicts of interest, I shall actively participate in all decisions of the body to a further point. I shall attend at City at S. any training mandated by the state of Georgia, and I shall also attend to schedule any special training arranged by the City of Tifton. Do you agree, I affirm? Congratulations. You are now a member of King's Department of the City. Thank you so much, Jay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Sign this, and then we'll give it to you. And his wife are been members of our community for how long?
About two years. Almost eleven years.
Okay, I was thinking it's a little longer, so not long, and they have jumped in full force. So we just appreciate all the work that you do, and thank you very much. Thank you for volunteering to be a part of this. And now invite my neighbor, Ms. Melvin, to come up here. Hey, Melvin, how you doing? Haven't seen you in a while. All right, we're going to go through the same process, okay? All right, there are oath of office, and Melvin is volunteering to serve on the Tifton Distortion Preservation Commission. We very much appreciate your work there. Says, "I Melvin I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties as a member of the Tifton Distortion Preservation Commission of this city and that I will support and defend the Charter of the City of Tifton as well as the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. I shall attend all meetings of the body to which I have been appointed unless providentially hindered. I shall abide by the standards or conflicts of interest adopted by the City Council and the rules of disclosure applicable thereto. Unless it's qualified by the standards or conflicts of interest, I shall actively participate in all decisions of the body to which I have been appointed. I shall attend at City at S. any training mandated by the state of Georgia, and I will also attend to schedule any special training arranged by the City of Tifton. All right, congratulations. It's official. You look different already, I have to tell you. Thank you very much, Melvin. And we very much appreciate the volunteering of our citizens to help us with these various boards and commissions and the work that they do and the training that they undertake. It really is appreciated very, very much. So thank you to both of those citizens for volunteering. All right, the next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. We can take these collectively, or we can take them individually. So I'll leave that open for discussion, gentlemen, however you want to move forward on those items four, five, six, and seven.
I'll make a motion to approve the entire consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. If you recall, at our workshop a couple of weeks ago, we discussed the resolution for approving a new location for the infant burials at Oak Ridge and establishing fees for those lots. And that has been presented in our packet. Pete, do you need to go over that, or is that Jessica?
I don't. Unless you have any questions, we did survey some cities, cemeteries, and we did get some sample pricing. So I think we're in line, and we need to probably start clearing this particular area pretty quick. So it's a four-year decision, but we do need to set the fees for the particular area.
Okay.
So it has been cleared, or it's going to be cleared? I see it looks somewhat.
Somewhat.
Okay.
We have to prepare it.
Have we discussed with the groups that actually dig the graves as to the viability? Or is there something about it that would, you know, make it not good? Or is there any, I guess, is it any different from the rest of that area that's, you know, that was the covered wagon, or that's all what that was? You know what I'm saying? I mean, we don't want to end up saying this, and then the guys go to dig some graves, and it's like, oh my God, you know, because not every area is good for digging a grave.
It's never wet out there. We did check. We did a little more wet area before we went out. It's a good, nice spot. It brings a weak run. Don't see any problems there with digging.
Okay, so we're not having issue with trees or roots and all that kind of?
No, it is open. We got to do a little clearing to push the edge back some, but everywhere where it's at is hard to clear. Which is that that sort of made it into the end for each lot.
Okay, and then that fee, I believe the fee was $125 per lot, and that was in line with other communities, like you said, for the same situation.
So do we do, are we going to do some of them no charge? I mean, most of those others were no charge, I think, which...
We can leave our city ordinance in there where if the council would like to, that if we have that situation where somebody can come in and say, "The undertaker done everything for free," we could donate it for free.
But they have to provide evidence to that effect, is that correct? Yeah.
Well, I guess we need to tighten it up in such a way. It's a terrible situation.
Yes.
Okay? Been there, I mean, that's just not good. But if a family has a wherewithal to pay, then they should pay. And so, you know, whether the funeral home decides that we're going to do it for free, I guess we just need to be careful of how we do it. And I'm all for somebody that can't pay. The last thing they should have to worry about is paying to bury an infant. But at the end of the day, it's taxpayer money, and so we have to be careful, you know, of what we do. So I guess there should be some kind of guidance in figuring out of these people, you know. We don't want to be, I don't want to use the word taken advantage of, because like I say, it's an absolutely horrible situation.
But I believe the ordinance does allow for that, does it not?
It allows.
Right.
It can be donated.
Yeah, we wouldn't be changing the ordinance.
Right, I just think we haven't. I think we tend to sometimes just do it, because everybody feels terrible.
Yeah, and looking back previously, I don't think that was ever followed up. I think if somebody called and said, "Hey, we've got to get the grave." There you go.
Yeah, I think to your point, we need to probably draft a short letter to funeral homes to explain our ordinance, what this means. And if they're going to provide this, then there's some kind of form that they could send back to us very easily, but we need to probably tighten it up on our end with regards to services. They provide that, and then we keep that in our file. I think that's smart. So I think that's good. We'll draft a short letter to funeral homes explaining what we're doing, where we're doing it, and then if there are no charges, then this is what's going to have to happen.
Okay. Is everybody clear on that, or are there any other questions, or anything else?
You'll have that, Johnny. You deal with it too.
Okay, all right. So what we'll need then is a motion to approve, if everybody's in favor, to approve the resolution that's in our packet, adopting that fee and identifying this additional area.
First move. Okay, so moved.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, and the next item on our agenda is bottle house license and brown bagging. We discussed that at the workshop, and Jessica presented some information. Jessica, is there anything we need to review or add that you have in our packet?
Not on the ordinance. The ordinance is the same as was presented at the workshop. The only addition would be the actual resolution adopting the fees. So, and the last two, the bottom two, are the only ones that we're adding. You know, the retail consumption and all that were our fees right now. So on the bottle house for annual permit, we're proposing $250 a year. And if they wanted to do a daily, it'd be $50 per day, or per event. Because events, you could do up to three days, kind of like a professional event.
Sure. Okay. Okay. Everyone's got that in the fee structure there in our packet. Is there any question?
How does that compare with other cities, their fee schedule?
The one that we compared to is Perry.
Perry, Georgia?
And I think they were at $235, so ours are more along the 50s. They had weird, their alcohol or beer sales were even like $436 a year, some random number.
I was looking at the City of Albany's brown bagging license. Now, I'm not proposing that we should do this, but they charge $1,000 for brown bagging.
Well, that's, we only charge like...
50 bucks.
What that is for annual?
Let's see, supplemental license must be accompanied by a consumption alcohol license for liquor, beer, or wine. So that's what their proposal is.
Yeah, so our, if you wanted to sell beer by the package or by the drink, it's $500 a year. So that's more than...
All right, so their one-day alcohol license fee is $25, but then you have to have...
You may be looking at a catering type, because we've got that as well. We're like, when we have rhythm ribs, we have businesses cater the alcohol. Is that what you're looking at? Because we have a catering license for that type thing. You may be mixing those up, I don't know. Because that's a different fee structure too.
No, a catering license is $900. Says it right here. Well, I guess what I'd like to take a look at before, I mean, I'm okay with the ordinance, but let's look at all of our fees, you know, to see if they're in line with what everybody else is charging. I mean, I understand we want to be as cheap as possible, but we also want to make sure that, you know, this is a offset to property taxes, so.
All right, is there anything specific you want our folks to look into first?
I'd actually say let's look at all of the fees.
As it relates to alcohol, or licensing, or...
Let's see here, the fee structure that you have right here, I'd look at this entire list of...
Okay, so as it relates to alcohol, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
I agree with Wes.
I mean, because I looked at, not only did I look at Albany, but I also looked at the City of Valdosta. I looked at the City of Douglas, looked at the City of Moultrie, which is just kind of a little bit confusing, but anyway, I looked at surrounding communities. So when somebody comes up to us and says, "Wet," I mean, I guess I'll just have to move my business down to Valdosta. I'll say, "Well, you're going to be paying a little bit more." I'm not saying we need to meet them, but let's be somewhere around the same line. And it's not, I'm not saying this is going to go up twice or three times the amount, but, you know, it may not go up at all. I mean, I'm just saying.
We just need to be aware.
We just need to review to see if we're in the same ballpark.
Because others will do it. They'll look and...
Okay, we've got actually two items here. One is the alcoholic beverage ordinance, adding the bottle house licenses, and then the other is the alcoholic beverage license fees. So do you want to postpone the license fees, or do those need to be adopted right now?
Well, I wouldn't be able to issue one without establishing a fee.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead. My recommendation would be let's let Jessica investigate that for us with some of the other commuters. Let's go ahead and approve what we have, so that as these businesses come in for the first of the year to renew their licensing, they're not, we're not delaying them, you know, putting undue burden on them from a timing standpoint.
Now, if the license, the fees, the current fees that we have are okay, so if any of those businesses came in, that'd be fine. It'd be something that would come over a later time. What I don't want this to do is said, "Yeah, we're going to look at it," and it go in the back burner, because I've seen that my six years on council.
Well, you have time to get that prior to the end of the year and...
Yeah, but you're saying are you wanting to adopt the fees that we're proposing tonight for the bottle houses or the way? And we can have it on the next agenda.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be in effect anyways right now, because I've already sent out the renewals for alcohol. They're due November 1st.
They're due November 1st. So this year wouldn't affect them at all anyway. That's good.
So that's what I was thinking, if we went ahead and renewed it so that she can proceed with the licensing, and then we would have time over the course of the next couple of months to review, make a recommendation. But that's up to y'all, and we can do it either way. I guess six or one happens.
Are you saying adopting the bottle house fees, license fees that are on here right now?
Right, right. But we can do it either way.
Which I'm fine with. I mean, if that's what we want to do, but I want, you know, I'd like for us to look at, look through that, because we, there may be some opportunity there to help, you know, because we're going to be, let's just be honest, some of the things that the TAVT tax is going to be slowly but surely falling away. So we're going to have to find, you know, ways to do things, and so, you know, this needs to be looked at.
Okay, you want to make a motion to that effect, or? I just want to make sure the timing is not going to get impacted.
I can have something for the next workshop for y'all to review.
All right, let's do that. I mean, I'm cool with what's on there now, but I just want to make sure that we do take a look at this.
Well, why don't we table this till the next workshop? We'll need a motion of that effect, right, Rob?
All right, you've got to make a motion to postpone to a definite time.
That's what, yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Are you going to be here?
Mm-hmm, mm-mm. I won't be here.
Yeah.
But that's okay. I mean, y'all can carry on, that's okay.
Okay, all right.
So...
I'll make a motion to table it to our next week.
You're going to make a motion to postpone until our next workshop?
Yes.
And that would be items nine and 10 on the agenda?
That's correct. I'd like to make a motion to postpone new business items nine and 10 until our next...
To allow Jessica time to review.
That's correct.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is everything on our agenda, so now turn and repeat for your city manager report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of updates. I left a flyer at your desk as a reminder. Tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock at Senior Center, there's really the first organized Tifton County 2020 census meeting. Jessica's on that committee, and it's obviously, we're making this known through our sites, real important as we start the census, that we're looking at people to help committees, pockets, and all the areas that we did not hit last time. So I just wanted to share that with you. Also, tomorrow night at 6, a few of us are walking a mile in her shoes at ABAC. And this is for great awareness as well, but I think the police department, and I think Brandon is going to put a pair of shoes on with me to walk a mile. So it's a great event, and I wanted to share it.
I hate that I'll be at the census meeting and miss that.
Well, the chief did it with me last year, and we had a great time, but it's a great cause.
Well, y'all got lots of pictures.
We're doing that tomorrow. And then lastly, the water improvements on Hillcrest, King Street, in that area are just about completed. The contractor is done. I did talk to Bishop Pratt, and I just wanted to share that with you as a follow-up. We met our commitment, and I'm sure the residents will be happy.
Excellent, okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will go through our mayor and council comments, and then we will need to go into executive session. So Frank will start down at your end.
Yeah, a lot of the residents over at Tiff Towers are concerned about crossing Second Street from Prince over there. They want to put some kind of a sign to slow traffic down or something to have traffic be aware that people are trying to cross sometimes, and wheelchairs and that type of thing.
Tell me the location.
Oh, it's at Second and Prince.
Second and Prince, okay.
Yeah, there's just a lot of people to speed through there, who are trying to cross, and they don't slow down at all, and these folks can't walk too fast. So it just has to be from some kind of a sign that's to remind motorists to be aware of pedestrians crossing or whatever. And I'm kind of on a theme here, but a lot of folks also are saying there's a lot of speeding going on down Ridge Avenue. And I've heard this off and on for a while. I'm primarily between Fourth and 12th, and especially that in the mornings, especially when kids are getting out to the school bus and all that, there's a lot of folks just speeding, the high speed down the street.
Fourth and...
Between Fourth and 12th and Ridge.
I think it's all those streets. College is the same way, Wilson. Yeah, it's just...
We're going to be trying something on 28th. We have, there was another complaint about speeding, so Captain Hyman and I will talk through that. And we have a couple of things that work, so we'll tighten that up and make sure we...
Yeah, because I've heard of numerous people, not just one or two. It's been, several people have mentioned this, so it's obviously a problem in the morning, especially. And that's all I have.
Okay. Johnny?
Well, I'm good. I'm good. I'm going to keep it to myself this time.
Okay, all right.
I try to hide it hard to believe, so.
I did not say a word, Johnny.
You just...
I know it's hard for me to keep it to myself, and so I...
I'm going to separate y'all, and you better watch out. I just want to thank all of our councilmen and our public works department for all the paving. I know we've all been thanked by various citizens, and they've expressed their appreciation for the paving that's going on, the striping, so good job. I think that's one of the biggest projects we've done that I've gotten the most comment and feedback about. So just keep up the good work, and I've been able to share with everyone that it's not only just one district that we very conscientiously picked, four districts to, you know, so everybody. And there's more to be done, so thank you for that. So that's, that would be my comments. Jack, what you got?
Just a couple of things. One, there's on Tiff Avenue, I've received another, I guess, complaint or concern. This fellow's on a motorized wheelchair going down Tiff Avenue, and sometimes in the turn lane and whatever. Now, I know we've had a discussion before with our former police chief about golf carts and stuff, and I think Wes got stopped crossing Tiff Avenue on a golf cart because of the, because of the highway. It's a state highway, I mean, issues. So I don't know, and we need to have a discussion with this fella about riding. I don't know what the law says about it, but I can't believe it allows to ride down the turn lane in a motorized wheelchair on Tiff. If it does, then okay, everybody to his own, hoping nobody hits him. But if it doesn't, then we need to have a discussion and have him cross and go. I mean, there's ways around, you know, things without just riding down Tiff Avenue. So I leave that to our city attorney with what the law is, and our captain and our city manager to deal with as they see fit, so. And the other one is a shout-out to ESG. I was out Friday late afternoon, and there was a, we were walking about a block down, and there was a drain at the curb where it was just completely stocked up with leaves and stuff. You know, we were supposed to have a weather event on Saturday, and the ESG guys haven't learned, "Don't ride down my street, because if I see them, I'm going to flag them down," and...
They'll know now.
And they do know now. So I happened to be out talking to a neighbor down there, and flagged him down and showed him, and... So I happened to be out talking to a neighbor down there and flagged him, flagged him down and showed him. And so with less than an hour, he was back with the truck cleaning this drain, because we didn't know what kind of water we were going to have. And I mean, this was, you know, at this time, it's Friday at 7:00 at night. So I sent Jeff a text and told him, but public wanted to say good job, so.
Okay, Wes?
I got two things. First thing, I want to piggyback on Pete's comments about the census workshop and just let our citizens know how important the census is to our community, because it helps to fund programs, state and federal programs. The states and the state and the federal government use the census to determine that funding for many of the services that we use every day. And not only that, it also determines how we are represented in our state government and our federal government. So I think it's in March when the census is going to come out. You know, please talk to your friend in January.
April 1st.
April 1st, okay. So in April 1st, when it comes out, you know, encourage everybody that you know to please complete the census when it comes out. Of course, that workshop is going to be tomorrow at 6:00 PM at Leroy Rogers Center.
Right.
So if you're interested in that, please attend. And the next last thing I got to say is I just want to, I'm sure everybody has heard about the Coca-Cola United coming to Tifton, Tiff County, Tifton, Tiff County. And I just wanted to show my gratitude, thanking the Tiff County Development Authority for attracting that amazing company. I know Julie, as mayor, you sit on that development authority and it's really going to be special. It's going to bring 200 jobs here to the town and the community and it's going to, you know, just benefit so many people and probably, you know, the surrounding communities as well. It's kind of such an impact. So I just wanted to say hats off and great work to that organization, because, you know, they go out there and work and sell Tifton and Tiff County every day and they're doing an amazing job, so hats off.
All right, thank you. All right, gentlemen, anything else to come before the council? We do need to go into executive session for legal, real estate, and personnel matters. I cannot make the motion, so if one of you would not mind doing that. All right, thank you.
I'll say.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, we'll take about a two-minute break and then we'll have a quick meeting and be done.